Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education Board Workshop Meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 27th. Official time of this meeting is 5:54. Again, public comment, sign up sheets are to my right at the table. If you'd like to sign up to speak for this evening. And I am transferring the meeting to Dr. Straya for the mid-year updates by department and strategic plan priority.
Thank you, Chairperson. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us as we embark in this conversation that will provide some insight regarding the great work that has happened thus far in meeting our strategic goals for this academic school year 2324 in alignment to our strategic plan and the work that we had set forward approximately close to three years ago. I always like to start off by, oh wait. I always like to start off by. Ralph, the clicker is not. What device is it?
Yeah, it's over there, but I just can't turn it on.
I always like to start off by highlighting our vision that is focused in making sure that we service all students and that we make sure that all of our students are prepared for the future ahead. As you will engage in conversations today with the different stations, you will learn about our future-ready focus that emphasizes the work that we're doing across all schools in making sure that our kids are well-prepared for the unknowns that the future lies, particularly with AI and many modalities of technology that are advancing every second that we sit in this room. And every week, we learn that things are advancing more and more, yielding different work opportunities that we are yet to imagine, and we have a responsibility to prepare our scholars for. I always also like to take us back to our vision, which is focused around making sure that our scholars are prepared for all aspects of life. And most importantly, that they are citizens of the world. Our world is becoming smaller and smaller as advancements in technology and other forms of communication continue to expand and grow. And for that reason, it is very important for us to continue to think about what we do in schools to educate and develop our students to be prepared for that ever-evolving change. As we continue to immerse ourselves in the work, we always ground ourselves in our values and making sure that we put equity, diversity, and inclusion at the forefront of everything we do to ensure that all students across our organization within gifted and talented, receiving specialized services, receiving language services, as well as receiving differentiated learning opportunities to make sure that all of their diverse needs are being met. We put excellence always at the forefront of what we do, even when we need to modify what we do to make sure that the needs of all students are met. And as you look at our values, there are a number of things, particularly those focused around continuous improvement that we put at the center of what we do. And today is an opportunity for us to look at the work that we're doing, reflect, and if need be, make adjustments so that we continue to be on the right path to servicing our students well. I like to remind people of our five strategic priority: excellence, engagement, future readiness, equity, and a focus on instruction and support that really drive the work that we do to ensure that the needs, not only of our scholars, but those serving our scholars are being met either to professional learning opportunities or an array of resources that we make available to them to be able to do their job well. This board has tasked us to look at our work within six critical goals. Those goals are: one, in strengthening student success by looking at how we inform instructional practices; two, looking at our business operation structures to make sure that not only we have adequate facilities to support our students, but that we're also maintaining and thinking ahead in how we are looking at capital projects to ensure that we are thinking five, 25 years ahead of the game so that we have plans in place that will effectively support the needs of our buildings to better aid and support our students in their development. And in doing so, this is work that doesn't happen in isolation. It happens in collaboration with our city and our city partners. Our third goal emphasizes human resource, finance, and operations working collaboratively. One of the things that we really focused on as a cabinet is making sure that we don't have silos, that we cross-pollinate our work so that everything we do is interconnected and well-aligned. Four, our goal of cultivating instructional leadership across the district, really supporting our leaders and becoming instructional leaders. That sounded a little bit redundant, but making sure that our leaders have the tools that they need not only to effectively manage the day-to-day operations of the building, but to effectively inform the work that needs to happen in the classroom so that they can better support our teachers and our teachers, in turn, can better support our scholars. Five, MPS has a goal in developing and increasing opportunities for students based on instructional programs and servicing them in the highest possible way by designing high-quality instructional programs. And as we speak, we continue to look at our instructional programs, think about how we are redesigning and building these programs to most effectively serve the needs of our diverse student body. And I highlight diverse student body. Just in November alone, we had 300 additional students from diverse backgrounds coming into our district. And yes, just today, we were looking at our enrollment numbers. We were projected next year to be at 11,400, and actually, as of today, we have 11,800 students in our district. Our numbers continue to grow, our needs continue to grow, and the diversity in which we have to educate our students continue to grow. Something to keep in mind as we move our work forward. Six, the importance of engaging our families through this process and providing opportunities and resources so that they, in turn, can better understand our system and effectively support the needs of their children. The Family Center is a perfect example of how we've been doing that work so that we ensure that our scholars have what they need to move the work forward. I want to pause a minute to talk a little bit, big picture, about around some of the accomplishments that we've had across the work we've done at this point in the year. And as you engage today in the different stations that you see across the room, you will have an in-depth conversation with members of the team and the work that's happening within their departments and align to the goals and the strategic plan that the board has tasked us to move forward. I want to start talking about the Facilities Department and some of the amazing accomplishments that we're really proud of and I think are important to highlight. I think first, I want to talk about the school-based health centers. We have placed an enormous emphasis in making sure that our students are not only taken care of socially, emotionally, and academically, but also that their health is also something that we prioritize. We partnered with a number of organizations, one primarily the Norwalk Community Health Center, and with the hopes that we can open health facilities that will not only service our students, but also their families as a whole. And I'm very proud to announce that at some point before the end of this year, we will be opening the first health center at the Family Center that will not only service our children, but also their families as well. In these conversations, we're talking about expanding resources, not only for physical healthcare, but also thinking about dental and vision care as well. As you know, all of these elements of a person's wellness are critical to maintaining a productive and healthy life. And I'm a firm believer that the better care we take of not only our children, but their families, the better able they are to living a better and more productive life. So I'm really proud of the work that Sandra Feoys and her team have done in putting this vision forward. It is a dream of mine, as someone who came from very limited means and understands what it is not to have healthcare, the importance of putting this in place so that our families can live productive lives. I think the Family Center has spoken for itself in terms of the integral role that it plays in servicing the needs of our families and welcoming our families as they enter the system, but also as they continue to be in the system. And I'll speak more to some of those highlights in a minute. I also want to highlight the focus that our school leaders throughout this year have had in improving school culture and providing the social-emotional support through our guided team to our scholars and the significant impact that it's had in leading a significant reduction in incidents across the district. I'm really, really proud to see this phenomenon, for lack of a better word, occur where we've reduced incidents approximately by 45% across the district, which is quite significant. It's so significant that, you know, we are part of the Alliance District and we receive Alliance grant funding. And Iris Wright from the state, who will be conducting the evaluation during her initial review, highlighted the fact that we have achieved such incredible, made such incredible strides in reducing student incidents across our district as a point to note. Norwalk High, I also want to highlight the Norwalk High School PTEC groundbreaking that will occur in March and the Sono groundbreaking that is scheduled to occur in April. I want to emphasize the Sono groundbreaking in April because I think it's an enormous milestone for this board, for the city, given some of the challenges that the so-called District 99 students have faced over the course of many years, maybe decades at this point, where they didn't have a school in their community that they can walk to, that they can call home. And for the first time in a very long time, in less than three years, I hope, we will have a school in Sono that the community can call home, that the community can serve as, have as a place of coming together. Because as you know, schools bring people together. And I am so proud that, under our administration, we have been able to accomplish this. I want to talk a little bit also about some of the academic accomplishments. We've had an enormous focus on reading. As you know, we had the Right to Read event, which was quite successful. And it highlights the importance of being focused on having a process in which we support students in reading development that is grounded on science and looking at the science of reading. We are in the process of professionally developing all of our elementary school educators to know how to apply the science of reading in the day-to-day instructional practices in their buildings. And that's something that will yield really positive outcomes for our scholars because our goal is that our scholars, they know how to read by third grade so that they can use reading as a tool to learn from third grade and beyond. We place an emphasis on instructional walks across the district so that we can cross-pollinate practices, but also establish common language and systems across the organization and provide opportunities where people can talk about practice and share best practices across the organization. And that has been moving along quite successfully, and the teams will speak more about this. We have an enormous investment in people. And in having an enormous investment or commitment to developing people, we have provided an array of professional learning opportunities, not only in curricula implementation and development, but also in looking at how to utilize assessments to inform instructional practices across the district. And as you learned last month, we saw some of those gains in our NOEA data and how our scholars have been demonstrating growth through the scope of time. And a lot of it is due to these teacher-team conversations, teachers receiving professional development and how to most effectively implement some of these practices. The National Association for Bilingual Education is the largest organization that provides professional learning, but also highlights best practices and research around how to best serve our multilingual learners. This year, we have one of our young scholars, which will be coming next month to present to the board. Won the essay contest at a national level, and that's a huge accomplishment. It's the first one in our district to achieve this. We also have a number of staff that submitted proposals to present at this national conference. Their proposals were accepted, and they will be presenting nationally to educators across the country on their best practices in bilingual education. So we're really proud about that. As you know, we've been working on developing the portrait of a graduate and have made significant strides thus far. We've engaged a number of community stakeholders, from families, educators, school leaders, community leaders, community members. And we're really looking forward to developing a really robust process that will inform not only our educators, but the community at large of what are the key elements that we're looking for, that our scholars should possess upon graduating more public schools that will make sure that they're future-ready and prepared for the ever-changing and evolving future that they will live in. As I stressed before, the Family Center has become a central point of our community. And it's a place where not only we provide professional growth for our families by providing them workshop support, giving them resources and information, connecting them to city agencies and community-based organizations. But tonight, we also started our first ESL class at the center. We had 36 families participate. We actually had, I want to make sure Frances that I don't misspeak. We had 266 families pre-register. We only had 35 seats. We had all 35 participants who said that they were going to attend, attend. And we're looking forward to hopefully opening up more sessions because there is a big ask and need in our community to provide these services. We're hoping to further expand the courses and classes that we offer our families so that they have the tools they need to better support their families. And if their families are better supported, then our children are better off. In the digital learning world, we continue to partner with Digital Promise and Verizon, and it's been a significant partner in helping us close the digital divide, but also a tool in which we have been able to further develop the capacity of our teachers, of our leaders in implementing digital learning experiences in the classroom while also infusing AI. Believe it or not, AI is here and is part of everything, the ever-evolving work that we do. And we want to make sure that our staff are also equipped in knowing how to use these tools in the classroom. We were also instrumental, thanks to the leadership of Ralph Valencisi. We had the first AYAI conference that was led by our team. And it was instrumental in bringing people across the state together to talk about AI and how we can most effectively utilize it to inform our practices as educators throughout the state. As you know, we've made significant strides with our future-ready program. One big stride has been particularly when students were suspended or they would not go to school, they would stay at home. We changed that. If a child is suspended, they continue to be educated through our sites because they're required to come to school to a different location to continue their learning experience. And to me, that was a game changer, particularly because sometimes the kids that wind up being suspended are the kids that need to be in school the most. And keeping them in school is critical. We also have our future-ready program, which provides an alternative programming model for students that have to work or have different life challenges. And we are very proud to announce that just a few days ago, we graduated 15 students that otherwise would have not had the opportunity to acquire their high school diploma. And we have 30 more students on track to graduate in June. And I'm so excited about this because we are opening doors to students that otherwise would not have had the opportunity to acquire their high school diploma. Also, this has had a significant impact in our graduation rates across our four high schools because it has positively elevated our graduation rates because these students that wouldn't have are now graduating. We applied to the League of Innovative Schools District and Leaders. And in March, we will know whether we will be part of this national team that will help us continue to be at the cutting edge of what's happening around digital learning and AI advancements. In the finance and HR world, for the second year in a row, we received the Meritorious Budget Award. We went through a reorganization of the HR department. One of the members that you saw today is going to be playing a pivotal role in the work that we do around HR to provide better services for our staff and for our community of Norwalk, I'm going to call us our Norwalk family. Through that reorganization and continuous collaboration with the Finance Department, we have developed better processes that have streamlined the process by which somebody enters our district and continues to receive services while in our district, which to us are critical points of the work that we do. And in closing, I want to highlight that over the course of this year, we've been doing a midpoint strategic plan review. This review has allowed us to engage all constituents within our organization, from our faculty, our students, our families, our board members, community leaders, and community at large, to really inform us in the work that we have done thus far around the strategic plan, but also to highlight areas that we can continue to improve, modify, to better serve the needs of our scholars. The insights gained from the midpoint strategic plan review will be invaluable in shaping the trajectory of our district. These findings will serve as the compass guiding us toward our collective vision, illuminating areas of strength and highlighting opportunities for growth. By harnessing this knowledge, we will be empowered to refine our strategies, fortify our resolve, and propel ourselves steady, fastly into the future. I think it's going to be a great opportunity to inform our work moving forward. And we're going to be really excited in the month of March to present this information to the board that will help us shape the goals for 2425. For today, this just kind of gives you an overview. You will have greater details in the different stations around the room. I just want to talk about the structure for this evening when you transition into the stations. So in Station 1, we have Mr. Robert Pennington, Frances Sia, Stacy Bergen, Bridget Adams, Dr. Deborah Perry, and Carol Rocha. I don't want to butcher your last name. Thank you for helping me out. They will be talking about a series of goals, particularly focused around instruction, curricula. And for that station, Sherry Samantha, Mary Ellen will start there. Station 2, we have Sandra Feoys and Lunda Asmani, and Cara Howard-Jenine will start in Station 2. Stations 3 encompasses of Ralph Valencisi, Mary Anne Shepherd, Alison Brady-Johnson, and board members Diana Collin and Ashley will start in Station 3. The stations are set up where the team will be presenting for 25 minutes. Then there will be an opportunity for the board to have a 15-minute Q&amp;A session. What I'm going to ask the board to do, you have a tool that is in your table, it's called Review Booklet. At the beginning of the booklet, you have all of the goals in chronological order. Last year, the feedback that we received was that it would have been helpful to have the goals in station order, in the order in which they would be presented. So the tabs represent each station, and the goals are in the order in which the teams will be presenting with copies of the actual slides and space for notes for you to take. This will give you an opportunity to jot down your questions and notes as the presentation is happening. And then when you have the 15-minute presentation point, you have, not presentation, Q&amp;A point, then you have the opportunity to ask the questions that you collected throughout the presentation. We ask that the board sticks to the protocols because it will help us easily transition through the different stations. We have set up for those members of the public that are joining us, seats at every station for you to sit and listen in. The Q&amp;A section is strictly only for the board members, not for the public. So just something to keep in mind. And we will keep time just to allow for the easy transition amongst the stations. Does anyone in the board have a question in terms of the structure for tonight and the document? So at this point, I guess we will transition to the first station.
Okay, Rob.
Let's go.
Good evening. So the school scheme has a lot of different departments, and so I'm just going to do a quick introduction. Rob Pennington, Assistant Superintendent.
Stacy Bergen, Ed Admin for Curriculum and Professional Development.
Bridget Adams, Executive Director for Specialized Learning.
Carol Walker, Chief Administrator for Workforce Development, Municipal Council.
Frances Sia, Education Administrator for Multilingual Learning.
And Barry Supers.
Dr. Debbie Perry, Education Administrator for SRBI, Scientific Research-Based Intervention.
So in Station 1, the two main goals that we are going to be looking at are Goal Number 1 and Goal Number 6. Goal Number 1 really talks about the academic components of the district. And Goal Number 6 really talks about family engagement. So the first goal is really around the curricula team rewriting curriculum and looking at business and social studies as our two major focus areas. And I'm going to turn it over to Stacy Bergen.
Hi. So the state this year has not yet released to the public a new social studies framework, but internally to school systems they have. We will be expected to rewrite our social studies curriculum based upon that new framework. And that work has sort of begun the beginning stages of thinking about what that work will look like and unfold over the summer. So we're really excited about this. Rob is super excited as a social studies person that this is happening now.
Especially the focus on inquiry because I really think that that is going. We want our students to be self-directed learners as we talk about the portrait of the graduate. And that idea of transitioning social studies instruction to an inquiry-based model does get me very excited.
Yeah. And our Business Department at the high school level is continuing to think about what our schools need, what our students need in order to be the best version of themselves in terms of financial literacy, career development, and aspects of really just sort of self-development. So we're rewriting a lot of those units and adding courses to our course handbook. At the middle school level, we have rewritten two units of study, one that involves a thematic novel across the grades 6 through 8. So we're really excited about that. And just today, I was meeting with our K-5 literacy team rewriting some of the units of study based upon feedback from teachers.
The second, Goal 1.12, is really around providing professional development to our educators. And so we're having teachers participate, but then also getting feedback from our educators. from our educators.
So, this year in October, we were really excited to offer an, a opportunity for teachers called EdCamp, where it was professional development by teachers for teachers. So, teachers apply to the providers of the professional development, teachers self-selected courses that they would be interested in attending, and they had a great time. We, ninety, over 95% of the teachers that took the survey rated the experience either a four or five. We also make sure that our power educators also have experiences throughout the course of the year for professional learning.
And I think that one of the key components of that EdCamp is all of the presentations were tied to our strategic plan. So, it wasn't any of those, just you can select different topics. It really was geared, they put in the proposals, we selected them, and it was an amazing day of learning for our teachers. I mean, it was the highest rated PD that we've received as a district.
So, as we continue to think about how we can best support our teachers with the teaching of reading, we have taken a multi-tiered approach to supporting professional learning in and around the science of reading. Last year, we started training our teachers in letters. This year, we are on our third cohort of, of 40 more additional teachers in letters, which looks at how to teach reading with understanding neuroscience behind how students learn best to read. But we knew that that wasn't enough. We couldn't train 40 people at a time. So, we were able to partner with The Hill for Literacy and work on creating opportunities for all teachers within the district. So, whether you're a Gen X teacher, specialized learning, multilingual learner teacher, doesn't matter, you all receive science of reading training through, with our partners at The Hill, which also comes with some embedded professional coaching that happens onsite at the school levels. We have a science of reading task force, which is made up of school administrators, district administrators, and teachers. And finally, we are members, we have been, we have accepted the role of being part of the state's initiative in the science of reading. And so, we are part of cohort number five, that is being, also receiving training from The Hill for Literacy, and that is made up of district administrators and teachers.
That's fine. So, as we transition to 1.3.1, it's tied to SRBI, which is our Scientific Research-Based Intervention, and really this goal around building collaboration between SRBI and Gifted and Talented to develop enrichment programs for our students, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Perry.
So, scientific research-based intervention is to support all students in our What I Need block, which is intervention on grade level and extension-based. This enrichment website that we've been able to build out is providing support for all students that want enrichment extension opportunities in all grades, K to six currently, and we're building out seven and eight, and we started that this summer, and we've been able to provide those opportunities during the school day. We were also able to build out the Win What I Need block for more students in the elementary area of math and a literacy block, both separate. We've also, as Dr. Estrella was mentioning before, we were able to reduce our numbers in the well below in the benchmark area, which reduces our numbers for summer academy for middle of the year. We're already down by 9%, and we look at our end-of-the-year numbers for summer academy, so we'll go down even further hopefully. We continue to do our walk-throughs for SRBI, so for consistency and efficiency, and we are also doing our district walk-throughs to calibrate for the consistency with instruction. The state has created a new multi-tiered system support, which is through the CTSET system, so we're able to have the same system that we use for IEPs for general education students now, and being able to look at that and being able to make sure that we're using the same referral worksheets and streamlining the process to support all students of need. We've provided professional development opportunities also for improvement teachers, some in-person, such as some reading support for intervention, and then we've also provided bimonthly trainings for improvement teachers just to support them with the new system, data, and all different initiatives that they're working on.
Wonderful. We are now going to transition to specialized learning, and we have a lot of high-quality information here. The first goal is really tied to quality IEP, and I'm going to turn it over to Bridget Adams.
Thank you. So, our first sub-goal speaks to the work that we are doing to transition the full district to the CTSET's platform. Originally, this goal was written with the intent of training all general education teachers in the development and implementation of a quality IEP. The state had intended for this training to take place led by this year, but they adjusted and postponed until next year, and so we pivoted with them, adjusted our goal, and we were able to take advantage of the opportunity, opportunity to be one of the first pilot administrative cohorts. So, the state came and delivered quality IEP training to all principals, assistant principals, and district-level staff. So, we're really excited to have the opportunity to use CTSETs as the platform so they could familiarize themselves further with it while learning the skills and the intricacies of developing an IEP. And so, we're really happy with the satisfaction rate. Additionally, with our training around CTSET, we have had the opportunity to train all new teachers and those with durational areas short in progress, which is new this year. We're really excited to celebrate. Excellent. Just keep going? Very good. Okay, our second sub-goal encompasses the third year's implementation of the work that came from the audit that occurred those three years ago, and we focus on four areas. The first being coherence. We continue to build coherent systems year after year to better implement all of the work of specialized learning. This year specifically, we celebrate, of course, the work with CTSETs and all of the work that we're doing toward compliance. We initiated a new teacher training sequence, which will become a complete, robust new teacher academy next year with a manual that is in draft form. This is being co-created alongside our teachers, so they have say and voice and feedback in the sessions and the work that we do throughout the course of the year. Also, in the area of coherence, we are doing work toward Public Act 23137, which is the act that extends services to students through June after their 22nd birthday. We are very happy to be recipients of the Bridge CT Grant, which will not only help us provide those transition services to those individuals, but also extend transition planning down to and through fifth grade, and we seek to go as far as pre-K in future years. We've also increased our work in collaboration with families, and through the use of a parent's survey, we are asking parents to provide their satisfaction report, their PPT experience. And so, this is a way in which we gather information that informs our practice. We're thrilled with the output, with the 98% satisfaction rate, and as a tool for our improved use, we have connected families with CTSETs in such a way that they can better access their students' records. We continue to increase our work in missed services to ensure that families are notified when we cover vacancy for a leave and the method in which we intend to make up those mandated services or offer ways in which to do this. This is an incredibly critical component of our work. Because of the dollar sign that can be attached to missed service, we are very motivated to increase retention and celebrate our teachers' passion so that they'll stay with us longer. Next slide. As we always say, in Norwalk, in all spaces, special education is not a place of the service, and we seek to increase our inclusion rate. You see that we have increased from 73.2 to 73.9. It doesn't feel like a large jump, but every part of that percentage means that one more student is receiving their services in a general education setting, and we only expect that number to grow with all of our increased co-taught and integrated classroom opportunities. An aspect of inclusion that isn't always accounted for in that number is the fact that our specialized programs are also continued in our schools, allowing the opportunity for students to attend homeschool or school of choice, and we seek to expand those programs with the least amount of cost incurred, but to the greatest benefit of the student. We are working to draft our multi-year framework for our continual services at each building to further increase that inclusion. And always, all of this work is grounded in the mindset shift that every student has a place within our school system, the mindset of the staff that all students belong and are part of the Norwalk community, and the mindset, the collaboration that comes from parents, not only of children with IEPs, but also those who don't have IEPs. And so, we do that through some of the opportunities that you see right that lines here. Thank you.
We're going to transition to goal 1.51, which is focused on 100% of schools will have counseling support, and will implement counseling guidelines tied to the ASCA model, and I'm going to have Carol take the lead.
Thank you. So, our school counselors, K to 12, work with our scholars, all scholars, in a multitude of ways. And one of the ways I wanted to first highlight was that of our career pathways. So, we've introduced last year our career pathways. And what is a career pathway? It is simply a path that a scholar will select, such as entrepreneurship, or healthcare, or wellness, or global citizenship, for example, that are tied to our 16 national career clusters. We know that when scholars choose a pathway, no matter whatever pathway you choose, we know it affords them engagement in the classroom, we know it affords them other experiences they get to have with scholars across different grade levels. So, for example, being able to tie in experience and taking your scholars in the art pathway and bringing them to a specific, a specific assembly, a grade nine to 12, for example, or grade six to eight, and so creating those opportunities for our scholars to thrive in that pathway. Our school counselors work closely with our scholars in our career pathways, and our career pathways right now live since last year in our middle schools and our high schools, so we're very excited about that. The next thing that I wanted to highlight and share is that this year, for the first time, we introduced a junior survey to our juniors. Now, historically, we've always given a senior survey, but we wanted to introduce a junior survey to really hear our scholars' voice in terms of their post-secondary planning, what their ideas are, what they're thinking of doing. Not only does it afford scholar voice, but it also allows our school counselors to better meet the scholars' needs by looking at their planning, for example, that you'll see here, and seeing how to best meet those needs for their future plans. So, this is very exciting for us and information that's updated continuously. Next, we also work with a firm called Edge Solve, and Edge Solve is a firm that works with 10 of our schools, elementary and middle schools, and what they do is they provide monthly coaching, and it's really a holistic SEL program that comes into our schools. We do walk-throughs, we have monthly coaching, as I mentioned, and it's really the rock and the pond. So, they come into the schools, and they are the rock, the ripple that goes in to provide that holistic SEL to not only building leadership, but also to all of our staff in the schools as well. The next thing I wanted to speak about is our developmental guidance. This is an opportunity for our school counselors to do two things. Number one, our school counselors who have been interested in doing so have written the curriculum for kindergarten, first grade, and sixth grade, and I'm very, very proud of the work that they've done because the state has given us a comprehensive guide, K to 12, and said, these are the standards from a counseling perspective that our scholars should be following and know and have learned. So, they have written this curriculum. So, in our kindergarten and first grade classrooms, district-wide, our scholars are receiving workforce development push-in lessons where the counselor will go in starting in September all the way to August on a continual basis and work with classroom teachers to provide those lessons. We're also doing the same in sixth grade as well, but we're doing that for social-emotional learning. So, that's really exciting, and we're looking forward to expanding upon that as we move forward throughout the year.
As we go to the next goal, it's 1.52. It's really focusing on expanding our SEL initiatives.
Our school counselors work with our high school scholars and will meet with them, for example, and I'm just focusing on high school for the moment, they will meet with their scholars many times throughout the year. But what we've asked of the school counselors is to share with us what those meetings are about, and so you'll see here the different meetings that have occurred, we would call our first meetings, and what the kind of topic of that meeting has been about. The reason that we've asked for that information is because we want to better serve our scholars, and how better to serve them than for us to know exactly what their needs are. We can apply that to programming throughout and also help individual students as well. Wanted to move on to what is called our SHAPE Assessment. So, we have had, the SHAPE Assessment has been afforded to us through a grant. It has allowed us to work with 22 schools and the district to really take the social-emotional health and temperature of our schools, of our families, of our staff, and really see what resources are available to them and how we are doing. So, we are actually in the throes of that now in terms of taking the diagnostic health, and we're going to be doing what's called resource mapping, which, which simply means which resources are available at the schools, at central office at the district level to be provided, and so we're doing that work currently. Lastly, we have been able to use grant funding to bring in a drug and alcohol counselor at our comprehensive high schools based on the data that we've received in many different areas, our scholar data, and also SHAPE Assessment as well.
So, as we transition to the next goal, it's really about reviewing and revising the health and PE curriculum as a district, so it really touches to SEL counseling, but also curriculum. Last year, as an organization, we rewrote all of our middle school to Health II, which is high school, health curricula, and this year, we've implemented, and now this year, we're rewriting our K-5 health curricula, all tied to the healthy, balanced living framework, which is the state framework that came out two years ago. We also realized that an area that hasn't been looked at was physical education. I think the last PE curriculum was written in 2002. So, this year, we have really took time to dive into the PE curricula. We've had professional development at the beginning of the year, and we have our draft units that are being developed, and at the end of this year, we will have those ready for implementation next year. So, we will have all of our health curricula, K-12, written, and all of our PE curricula written tied to the health and balanced living framework. So, that's everything from goal one, and we're going to transition to goal six, which is really tied to ensuring our families are provided with equitable opportunities, and I'm going to transition to Frances Sias.
Thank you.
No problem.
Last but not least, the Family Center serves as a comprehensive hub to engage families in the child's education and to provide families with access to resources and services, not only to district-wide resources and services, but also community. The mission of the, of the, of the Family Center is to provide families with the opportunity to impart knowledge through all our departments so they could be empowered to self-advocate for themselves, for their children's academic needs and social-emotional needs. Most importantly, what has become of the Family Center has been an amazing vision of Dr. Estrella, where we started out with, you know, centralized registration, making sure that it's a seamless registration for all families. Previously, the registration used to be separated. The MLLs used to go into city hall while other families were allowed to go into the school building, but now everyone serves equally, so it's equitable access. I'd like to, to share this slide where just a year ago, we had a total of 4,261 visits, and as of January of this year, we were at 4,493, but when I looked at my numbers earlier today, we're close to 5,000. So, the Family Center has become not only the, the hub for resources and learning opportunities for families, but is the go-to right now of the entire community. We just had a member of the community come in to see if we could get him a tire for his car that had a blowout, so it's become a hub for, for everything. But we had some, a gentleman there that did, did help him. Anyway, and more importantly, it's really become a wraparound service that's created an inclusive and a welcome environment to service all families. Many of the services that we provide there at the Family Center is registration, food service, transportation, there's an issue with transportation, assessment, we have an odienologist onboard also supporting kids there, transportation, and medical services. One of the bonuses is that we have a, the One of the bonuses is that we have a, the next steps, next steps, 18 to 21 community-based transition program located at the Family Center, they're allowed to work at the Family Center, so they're completing their internships. We're developing young people to have independent vocational and functional academic at the center. So it's really a nice place to be, and families are very happy with it. The many things that has supported the family is our team, or the educational administrators from central office have provided professional learning opportunities to the family, for example, gifted and talented SRBI, Stacy has done a PD, the science of reading. We have monthly arts and craft, where we integrate literacy and social studies into the arts and crafts. You've joined those sessions. We've also grown so much where there is a pantry at the Family Center, and just recently we serviced over 200 something families are visiting the pantry. It's become a special place for the community, and I'm proud to state that with, in collaboration with the Communication Department, Pan Square, and a website for the Family Center has opened up a gate of information for families, where we sent out a survey to see what courses are they're looking for, what type of learning opportunities would they like to take place at the Family Center. And we got an overwhelming response for an ESL course, and we just had 266 families pre-registered for ESL course, and it started today, and we had 35 families at the Family Center today for a three-hour session. It's three times a week.
Three hours, three times a week?
Yes. Yes. But we have a waiting list of 200 and something families, and we have to do the research to be able to refer them to other places to take these courses. And the last one-
This, I just want to let them know that this was tied to sub-goal 6.12, which is really increasing our opportunities for workshops and events. And then the last section Dr. Estrella talked a lot about was this idea of a community health center. And that community health center has already been mapped out, the space is allocated, and it will be up and running by June. So they're looking to come in-
By what?
By June.
Passing families.
At the Family Center. So we've had health centers in some of our schools, but we're also going to have one at our Family Center. And I think that one of the key important pieces of this health center is, it's not just for students, it's for students and their families, which I think is important.
Yeah, it's going to be open during school hours and after-school hours, and we're in the process of trying to get vision service at the Family Center as well.
All right. So we're going to transition to questions, and all I would ask is that if you have a page number that we can turn to and so that we can stay focused and I can pull up the slides.
Well, another great job of the timing. Kudos. Really sticking to it. Want to start? I have, this is kind of a data question, and this is on page, with regard to the IEPs. When we talked about some of the feedback we got, we had 150 families respond, 98% satisfaction rate. Out of how many PPTs is that? There were responses?
150. So each response was, so it's a response per PPT?
Got it.
Yes.
Okay, so there was like a segment of non-responses?
So, yes, there are.
Okay.
So it's not a different option?
I just kind of get a sense of what the response rate is.
That, I will, I will get you a number.
Okay.
Because as I sit here, I think, I don't think, I, PPTs we had to, that's a great data point, but I can sort of find out, and I'm really interested to know.
Me too.
Because we do want to increase the participation. You know, I think sometimes folks, their names aren't going to be, it's not an anonymous survey. But we do want to increase because it helps us, it really, truly informs our work, of course. We've gotten, I don't know if I put the number here, but I think it was over 20 families indicated that they couldn't access CT sets, and it truly is as simple as us clicking another button, a guy gives them an email, and we were able to successfully do it. So it's a working tool.
I don't have a question, but I've been hearing a lot of positive, especially at the changes and everything that's moving forward in a positive way. You know, it makes a big difference because for a long time, it was such a negative topic, but now it's growing and it's going in a very positive direction.
Thank you for that feedback, that this team is working incredibly hard, and it isn't just about special education, it's the collaboration with the schools, and the fact that we aren't siloed. I think that really does mean it.
I've said how much I've enjoyed the two special ed subcommittee meetings we've had because you, the work you're doing is excellent, and it's, you're also enthusiastic about it, which is like, is really wonderful here.
Pretty good day, and you love your job.
It is. I had one question about, this would be page 26, with the health and PE revising the curriculum. I know we were primarily talking about the SCL component, which is hugely important, and I wanted to ask if our health curriculum is LGBTQ plus-inclusive?
Yes.
It's 100% is, and one of the other pieces that last year, like, we used our data to say we needed an LGBTQ counselor supporting students. So we partnered with the Triangle of Community and the city, and we have that in place in our schools. And then this year, the data's also telling us we need a drug and alcohol counselor. And so we, we're constantly looking at data, and I mean, the amount of training and support that we've provided, and partnerships with the Norwalk Partnership, and I'm on their head team, and so is Cadence, who works for Triangle Center. So we're constantly having these conversations about how are we supporting all students? Because I think that is the most important piece.
So even thinking about not like the health curricula piece of it, but thinking about how we become more inclusive in what kids read, right? And so about two years ago, we, we looked at the high school options for novels that kids were engaging with in other texts and said like, oh, it's a kind of a lot of dead white people here. And so we needed to begin to think about how do we mirror our community? And we looked at various different subgroups, not just based upon like race and gender, but looking at LGBTQ, looking at people who have, are physically differently abled, right? And so how we expose kids to literature in that way, so that if kids are empathetic in the early years, right, that carries on with them through middle school and high school and adulthood.
And to re-emphasize for the camera, this was about adding books, not taking away.
No, adding, adding.
People get a little touchy.
Adding, adding books, lots of books.
Yes.
Options.
Lots of options, lots of choices.
Inclusive option.
Yes.
You can still read the slide back.
Yes. There's nothing wrong with it, my senor. It's a good book still, but there's other pieces we can enjoy.
Absolutely. Well, as a team, you also put professional development for us, with the LGBTQ community. We add our training, which is also needed, because, you know, we need to understand what's going on in the district.
We've shifted in the people team process when students are attending. We ask name and prefer pronouns always. We often say that about me, without me, we can't address sessions about every individual based on a file, and we might lose the capacity there, so the work is working.
So, page 27, Family Center.
Okay.
I think for me, just seeing the growth of it is unbelievable, because we've been able to reach the district at large. It started very small, but it has grown between the workshops, the events, the number of families coming in, you know, so it's a definite positive in the community and for me. And I'll put the plug in there, for, it was a conversation that was just a fly-by-night type of thing. Somebody mentioned, oh, we should have a pantry. Me being on the board of Norwalk Mutual Aid, helping the community, I was like, wow, let's partner and do that together. So to see it and the number of families, I would have never thought the number of families that you have helped with that pantry. Like, for me, you know, I'm thinking under 100, but you're way above that. And then to see the increase of the holiday giveaway too, between meals and the gifts and these families that can't afford certain things. You know, I think people forget that the pandemic affected lots of people, but there's lots of families that even after the pandemic, still can't afford a lot of things. So for me, being able to be a part of all those events, and I've told other board members to, you know, make sure to go, it's huge. But my question is, how do we get more people to know what the Family Center is about? I mean, I think that's where we're a little stuck, because we stay within the Norwalk Public Schools website, you know, communication does the best, but how can we grow in the community?
So a couple of things. First, the other piece about the pantry I just need to add, because I think it's really powerful, is we don't just have food, we have book bags and we have coats as well for the winter.
I was going to say, do we have, have we done any clothing stuff?
So I think that that is a whole other piece that you wouldn't think of unless it was explicitly said. And I do think that because registration is at the Family Center, we're seeing more and more over the last three years, families do know about it because they're going there as part of registration. I think if a family has been in the system for many years, they may not have that same connection, but I see as the years go on, we're getting more and more families who come in for registration, and they see, they see everything that's happening, and they see flyers, and they see the pantry, and they, they meet the team, and the team is always marketing, we have this opportunity, and we have this opportunity. And they are also avid users of Parent Square, which I think is another way that we are constantly communicating about different events and all the workshops and all the different opportunities.
You get all of them.
Even, even when we're trying to stock the pantry, because it really takes a community effort, it's not something that is done in isolation. So when we have our stock the pantry, that's something that we're sharing with the community to get donations and to, and so that helps with getting the word out as well.
I think the Parent Square has helped a lot getting the word out, and also in collaboration with the community, the Communication Department, they created a Family Center website right on the MPS website, so we have, we're on the top of the menu, and people are starting to use it. Communications Department, making sure that they're monitoring the number of people going into our site. So it's really growing, how they come in for any type of support, and we're there for the families.
I can speak to the ease of registration. Registering my kiddo for kindergarten last year. Yeah.
There's some behind-the-scenes work too that occurs. The Family Center also serves the departments of the district. Because registration has improved so greatly, it's improved our work onboarding students and getting their programs in place, sometimes even before they arrive, which has not ever been my experience here in the past or in other districts. So there's a lot of quiet work that happens, and we celebrate that in conversations with families.
As soon as we find out there is a child that needs services, even before they make it to the school, we contact the specialized department and let them know, so that they're ready and prepared themselves to provide the service and have their PPTs.
It's been life-changing for many students.
So the kids could receive the services as soon as they sit in that classroom. We give them-
Or before.
Before.
Because of them.
We're already planning for that child.
And I just want to say, because I just need to say it, is that Frances does an amazing job running the Family Center, but that is not the only work that she's doing. She's also the Education Administrator for multilingual learners, and so she's providing professional development constantly, and she's working in schools constantly. So the fact that we have such an amazing system is a compliment to her and to her team.
Thank you.
I've heard she's gone out and knocked on doors to get students back.
She has, her team has gone and knocked on doors.
We get kids back in school, whatever it takes.
Just to follow up to that question, so the numbers on this slide, when we look at the number of visits, is based on, how is that counted? Is it based on registrations?
Just registration.
Okay.
And so some families come back multiple times?
Yeah.
Because you have to have-
These are like unique visits?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's based on like people coming to register for school or any visit?
They come to register for school, they might come to bring a document that's missing.
Because you have to sign in every time?
Well, we actually, we have it on a pod, and it's automatically signed in, and that data is gathered for us. It used to be sign in, but now we're doing a little bit electronic. Yeah. But we also have the numbers of-
Years, I did kindergarten.
Look how much change there was. Oh, you would sign in when you first-
I think so. Like last winter. I think so.
And then we also have all of our family events, which, I mean, some are at the Family Center, some are at schools because they're bigger performances, and that's another one as well.
We have a performing where 400 families show up, other 250, it depends. The gifted and talented workshop, we had over four families. So based on the interest, we really get families.
Any final questions, because we're getting to the final questions. So I'll give you a chance for one final question.
I have one, it's not really based on any, just one sort of big slide, just kind of like, thinking at this mid-year juncture, we have an opportunity to kind of take stock. Are you, are you able to identify any opportunities for adjustments, improvements slash, you know, like, this is going well, then this could be doing better? Like, what have you noticed so far?
So one of the things that I will say is based on our mid-year data, we're really like over the moon with our math results, and with our literacy results, we haven't seen the same tremendous progress. And so one of the areas, like we have a principals meeting next week, and we're really diving into unit four of our literacy unit. I mean, we've seen growth, but it just hasn't been the same level, and it goes back to, like, we're doing the work on the science of reading, because we know that that's crucial if we're going to improve, we have to improve tier-one instruction to improve our results. And so next week in our principals meeting, Stacy's going to be leading a session with principals and literacy coaches on Tuesday, and then with assistant principals on Wednesday, that really dives into our new unit four, which is our next unit, and really building out our strong practices around literacy instruction. So that is an adjustment that we have looked at based on our MOI data. We're seeing really great progress in our lower tiers, like our students who are getting intervention, but we're really honing in on students to push them above the 60th percentile, because the 60th percentile on NWEA, it translates to a level three on its value.
And I would push that to focus on the comprehension, where phonics and phonemic awareness will be stronger, and so we really want to take it to that next level. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you so much. During this session, I'm not going to read all of them, because it took up some precious time the last time, but we're going to be going over goals two, three, so essentially facilities, HR, finance. Goals five and six will cover some of our equity work and our goals around communications and data. I'm going to begin with our facilities goal. The first goal, I'll let you orient yourselves.
Thank you.
The first goal is that the facilities department will be working with the finance department, and with that, we're going to be building annual building-based facilities plans. So this was something that we started three years ago, and what this does for us is it's a very large file. It's not an attractive thing to look at, but it gives you the physical health of each facility in terms of maintenance and upkeep. And then it also, we've included our safety infrastructure upgrades. Now, what you see here is a combination, you could click here at a different time to do the various things, but what you see here is a scorecard that's for the district, and this scorecard actually captures bullet number two, which is a- which is a third party does come into each one of our facility. And every year we get a third-party assessment or audit that tells us the cleanliness of our facility. And then each school gets their own report card and that school gets commendations and then also some recommendations for improvement. Overall, as a district, we got a level two. Level two actually means like new dirt. And new dirt is good dirt because it means that things are just getting left behind and sitting there. So this annual building facilities plan encompasses our maintenance of facilities and also the fiscal health of our facilities and how it is that we're working to improve our facilities. In addition to that, we've added the safety and security infrastructure updates that we've been doing the last two years. So under your leadership and under the approval of the capital budget by the mayor to actually add these things, we've been able to go from 100, we've been able to add an additional 150 cameras across the district. That has given us an additional 296 views. In those views, we've now have like 908 different views of our facilities. These are for our administrators, for our first responders. And so overall, we just have a better monitoring of student activity and activities of people coming in and out of the facilities. We also have been able to add 691 door alarms. Prior, none of the elementary schools had door alarms in their exterior doors, only in their main door. And so now if you open an exterior door in our elementary schools or our middle schools and some of our high schools, an alarm will sound and it will trigger to somebody that a door has been put ajar or somebody has left that door. So these security improvements all are part of the plan that we started three years ago.
Three years ago.
And so now. Yeah, three to five years. And now it's captured in this very large audit and this very large comprehensive work that we have with our facilities. In addition to this, we started the 25-year building facility plan work with the city and Senator Duff two years ago. This was after Senator Duff was able to get us a 60% reimbursement rate from the state for any new school construction or renovate as new. No, no, 80 is for, just for Norwalk High.
60 is amazing.
That's the regular 20s.
It used to be in the 20s, correct. And so that, with that, we then set in motion a plan to identify which schools need to be rebuilt or need to be remodeled and which sites are we going to do first and second. So that work started last year. This year, because this new HVAC grant came out and this was another opportunity for us to actually get a 60% reimbursement, the city and the Board of Ed and Senator Duff's office have actually turned their attention to making sure that we're applying for this grant because this is not a grant that comes around that often. It's actually something that was unique to us. It started last summer and I think there'll be another round this summer, but we don't know how long this will be available to us.
Can I just ask, when will that?
I think March or April, but I think that we did apply for six different grants. It totals $35 million. The city had to commit 40% of that $35 million. So once we hear from this grant and what those funds are going to be committed for this work, I think then we'll pick up the work with the 25-year plan the way that we had last year. So there's just a shift in what our attention is right now because this grant has become open to us. But we will be revisiting this 25-year plan, I'm sure, before the end of the year as soon as we hear back from this grant. I'm gonna turn it over to Lunda.
So goal three covers HR and finance. As you know, we went through a reorganization where we merged HR and finance under one umbrella because there's a lot of collaboration that works between those two units. So obviously, HR and finance exists to support the work that's being done, support of our children within the district. And so one of our goals is one, to enhance that collaboration because there is a lot of cross pollination. But what we also wanted to do was to also improve our hiring, our hiring practices and hiring process. So what used to happen is, you know, you have a vacancy at a school, a principal wants to fill that position, they go out, they recruit, they find a candidate, they recommend and that name is brought forward to HR and finance and then they have to wait because they have to go through the recruiting process, getting the information, getting fingerprinted and all of that. And in the meantime, the principal is calling and asking, you know, I need this person here. I've selected somebody, when can they start? And so that process took longer and so what we looked at was, how can we be more efficient using the tools that we have? And so one of those tools is we use Frontline software. The software is called Frontline, which is our recruiting software, but it's using that same software to continue to manage the process. So we capture the individual's name, social and all of that, but not having to recreate that information multiple times in the process until that person gets hired. So that was one of the things that we did. The other thing that we wanted to do also is to provide support to our principals by having dedicated individuals within the HR department that support them. So we have HR generalists that are associated with specific schools. So the principals have a go-to person. That generalist understands the schools, understands the needs at any given time. And so that has really worked well with our principals knowing that they have somebody that they can call at any given time that knows what their issues are within the building. The other thing that HR seeks to also to do is to also provide our principals just in the day-to-day management of the building. What supports do they need because they're supervisor? So they have, in addition to the education piece, but they have to also be able to effectively support the people that work in the building, supporting the teachers, the custodians, understanding how to deal with issues of FMLA, employees getting sick, grievances and all of those things that everything, day-to-day that deals with supervision. So HR has worked really hard in providing that information to our principals, understanding the rules, equal employment, collective bargaining. So those are the some of the things and so we put together an employee handbook. No, you're fine, you can stick. An employee handbook to help support the principals. And then the other element of that is obviously making sure that we're effectively recruiting to fill some of these positions. There is obviously a nationwide challenge now with recruiting of educators, but one of the things that HR has set out to do was to be more proactive. We are going to colleges, we're going to college fairs. We are going to events like the superintendent mentioned, the National Association of Bilingual Educators. That is an event where bilingual educators are, which is a shortage area. So we go to those conferences also, we send our HR teams to those conferences. They set up a booth and they also recruit nationally and try to get people to come to work in Norwalk. And we've had some success with that as well. And so just broadening our reach, you've seen our billboards on buses and along the highway and those types of things. So that's our recruitment effort, the train stations, exactly. And then the other, I think the last thing on the HR side is obviously taking care of the employees that we have and understanding their needs. So we collect data, for example, when our employees exit, when they leave the organization, we ask them, you know, you've worked here 30 years, what kept you here for 30 years? What is it about Norwalk that you stayed? So we get that information, so we get data that helps us analyze that. We also ask people when they leave, why are you leaving? If you haven't been 30 years, you're only leaving after two or three and what are some of the things that are causing you to leave the organization? Our exit surveys have actually told us that most people leave this organization for issues unrelated to the work itself. It's either family, they're relocating, their husband or their wife is moving or their spouse is moving to another job or their kids have graduated and they're downsizing and they're moving to another state, those types of things. And so there are a lot of reasons that people exit the organization. And so our exit data has allowed us to capture why people are leaving and it's not the things that you typically hear for the most part. There are a lot of reasons why people are leaving. But we also find out the job is also stressful as well. It has become more stressful to be a teacher in recent years than in the past and so we are capturing that. And so we're using that information to inform the types of training that we provide to our schools. On the finance side, one of the things that we strive to do is obviously, we support the schools and support the students and so build budgets that are student-based. And so we started doing that a couple of years ago and so what we've also.
I'm trying to follow you, I lost what page we're on.
Third, slide 13.
It's gonna be the next one. Oh no. It's the next one. I see, slides. Very tight.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
See it over there?
Do you wish you could zoom in on it?
That was not a question, so I didn't.
No, you're fine. So our student-based budgets, what we've tried to do is obviously, we've talked about the increasing needs of specialized learners and so what we've tried to incorporate into our budgets now is a component of specialized learning needs that exist at each school. And so we've worked hard to make sure that that's part of that process. And then within the finance office, we've actually designated a person that just focuses on student-based budget support for the principals. So that's their go-to person. In addition, similar to what I said about HR having a go-to, but the schools now have a go-to person in finance that can help them with their budget. And then obviously, what we've worked hard to do is enhance our financial reporting, making sure that people understand our finances. Beginning last year, working with our communications team, we put together a dedicated budget website where all of information is shared. For those of you that are on the finance committee, you know that we revamped our financial reports to you to provide more analysis for you. And then obviously, the budget book that we put together that has won awards for our presentation. But our goal is just to be as transparent about our finances as we can. And then final slide here is just making sure that we are providing resources equitably to all schools and so identifying X number of social workers per student, X number of custodians and all of those things that the schools need, but making sure that it ties, there's math associated with it so that we're not over-resourcing a school or under-resourcing a school. So we have this as a model to make sure that each school's resources were uniform in how we fund schools. Obviously, the student population being a big factor of that.
So we're going to pivot now to some of the work that we're doing with Equity. If you want to find your page, I'm gonna skip over some of these goals. You've seen them. It's gonna be 19.
Yeah, right there.
And so then some of the work that we have continued that Dr. McBride had started is the work that we're doing with the Equity Institute. The work with the Equity Institute actually involves Equity ambassadors. These are staff people that, from each school that represent the school. The work is very personal work because some of the topics have, some of the topics include like workshop on microaggression or workshop on implicit bias. So a lot of the work is personal work that these folks have engaged in. They're now in year two. In year two, if you get a chance, the topics are in that little, you know, if you ever scan it, the topics are in there for you to see just the topics that they're exploring. But they do a lot of work and some of the survey data that you see here are the respondents feel that these sessions have taught them something about themselves that they could apply to their work and their life. So this is personal work and if you build people's personal capacity to have conversations around Equity, then they can lead some of this work at the building and at the school to then move some of this work at the school. This pairs with some of the work that Dr. Fergus is doing and you'll hear about that at the next station as to how that work with Dr. Fergus is going at the school, okay? The other piece is that we, Dr. Estrella actually brought my brother's keeper, my sister's keeper to the district. This is a program that is research-based and has demonstrated significant impacts on students across the nation. That my brother's keeper, my sister's keeper actually has nearly 300 students in it now. There's about 100 and, actually, a little bit less than that, about 130 boys and about 120 girls. And there's over 50 mentors. And what they do is they peer students, students that are black and brown students with a mentor and then that mentor checks in with them, checks in with them weekly and then we convene them as a group monthly. And they explore a variety of topics. The topics are usually school-specific, so everybody hosts. And then those topics could be anything from, you know, what are we doing about college or where do you see yourselves to things that are more personal to these students. We also do outings, a lot of outings that students don't typically go to, like I think they just went skiing. So things like that that helps them feel more engaged in the community and then offers them another adult. This is a data gathering, so we're level-setting for this here. So every student, we monitor their attendance and then we monitor their grades to see next year if we've actually had an impact on how they are faring in school through these various touchpoints that we have with the young men and the young ladies. I'm gonna turn it over to Kristen, who is going to talk to us about the data work that we're doing.
Hi, so as a member of the research and analytics team, representing the work that we've done and the team was only formed about two years ago, so everything that you're hearing about is really recent. The approach has been both about making sure we have the appropriate tools, like identifying where there were gaps in data tools and then also making sure that schools have the supports and the structures to be able to use those tools. At the high school level, we've relied a lot on our partnership with the Connecticut Rise Network in terms of use of data tools. And while last year that focused on grade nine on track teams, this year, the new work is around post-secondary and ensuring that every student graduates with a plan. With a plan, yep, whatever that plan. So that kicked off with a junior survey where students are, you know, anticipating what they think that they would like to do and then support can be tailored to ensure they're hitting milestones like completing the FAFSA, right? If they are college-bound. At the elementary and middle school levels, one of the structures we have is data lead structure where every elementary and middle school has identified a staff member who comes quarterly to a community practice session to share best practices, be trained for using the tools and then they receive support throughout the time in between. We've also used a common assessment platform across our schools. And this year, while it was launched last year, this year we're really seeing a much more uniform use of that, which really allows for our schools to identify how students are doing in relation to standards, classroom level, grade bands, schoolwide. The other piece of this is the tools. And so this year, we launched a brand-new data dashboard. And these were built in-house and so they are fully customizable and have already been iterated on based on need. And what they do is provide our principals and assistant principals data leads and real-time access to data that can help them see which students are on track, which students need additional support, how are we progressing in relation to our school performance goals? How are we, what is the impact of any additional support that we've given or any initiatives that we've seen, you know, kind of moment to moment, the impact of those decisions? So this was just launched early in December and we've already seen over 2,000. In terms of these dashboards.
Did we see any improvement? Because I couldn't really see it.
Yes. We could send you, we could send you snippets, okay? So this is like chronic absenteeism, student suspension rate. So it's just the various things, but yes, we could definitely send it to you. And we want to actually, the goal is actually to now start to gather college persistence data. Okay, that's the next step. Some of the work around the portrait of the graduate Dr. Estrella highlighted. And so then one of the things that we wanted to tell you is that there, we do have it on our website. So if people wanted to go to our website, you can point them to that. We have gathered over 470 community feedback survey responses. The students did tell us that they wanted more real-life skills. And there were various questions, all of them did sort of land us with the families, the staff and the community members, kind of agreeing around the same areas. So critical thinking, communication and problem solving, you will see, came up in several places. So as a community, we are coming to some consensus around like the things that really are important to us. This will provide us with the North Star and it's timely because we're actually doing, we're looking at our strategic plan right now. And that work with the strategic plan, married with this Portrait of the Graduate, will actually give us some good goals for next year, or the next, you know, several years. The other piece is that we always still have the data from our school quality reviews and the testing data. This was a goal that was put in place a few years ago at the start, because we needed to find ways in which we do some progress monitoring before we get to something like an S-STAT or smarter balanced data. So we wanted to make sure that we knew how students were doing throughout the school year, and we do gather some of this data through the school quality reviews and various testing data. The other piece, which is kind of our final piece, is around our communications goals. So you know that the communications team does a lot of just profiling the, the different people that we have in district, and also like the events that we do. But one of the goals that we want to have is not just inviting the community into us, but how is it that we are impacting the fabric of the community? So us going also out to the various community events, and us also being a participant in the city is a goal that, that we have. And then we launched our parent square, so our messages have shown a fifty-five to sixty percent open rate. This is just ways in which schools can shoot out messages directly to parents. This is like, if, this, we use this for if buses are late also.
It's an app, right? I guess it's an app that they could have.
It's an app, okay? So, so it's just something that we've launched to just creating greater access for our families.
You're just transitioning to Q and A?
And we are done, right on time. So I know that you have some questions. We'll let you gather your thoughts first.
Well, I have a question, just, you know, moving backwards.
It's totally up to you, however you want to go.
About one of your goals is to go out of the school system and.
Into the community.
Into the community.
Yes.
And just this week, we have, board members got an email from Johan Lopez.
About Earth Day?
About Earth Day.
How do I know that?
Because you are connecting with him. I want you to, I wrote to him, I said, no, I'm.
No, I've already connected with Johan. Thank you so much.
Good. Well, I'm, I'm going to show up too, so.
Show up. No, but I'm actually helping him connect to the school.
That's, that's great.
So I sent him fans. Yes. Emily and I have, and so has Carol. So we've actually connected to Johan. And I sent him a series of questions that he's going to go back to the committee to get me. So for instance, they want to do like a poetry contest, and I was like, okay, great, we'll do it. But who will we submitting the poems to? When is the due date? So those types of, just, just the cool things.
Yes, but yes.
We are very much, the teacher and you is right there.
I love it.
And I love Earth Day, so.
Did you bring up Cranberry? Because he wanted to coordinate.
Yeah.
He was very excited.
So for the, the facilities plan, like safety and security, does that involve SROs?
No, SROs are through the NPD, so they're, they're through the police.
So that has nothing to do with us?
Well, they do. So they're, they're connected to us, but this plan is really like our investment in school safety, so our investment in the actual infrastructure, preparedness, right? So are people practicing their drills, and then how we're communicating with one another. So mutual link, radios, line wise, anonymous alerts.
And I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying that just because I want to know, I'm really interested in how like that works with SROs, because I don't think there should be like so much like police presence in schools. That's just, you know, my personal opinion, so I was just always curious about that. And then for the equity and inclusion part, how are we like making sure that, I'm really big, obviously, like I'm in school for history, that we're teaching like the, the real history? And like, I know that there's, I know, because I grew up in Darien, but there was an issue with the parents not liking, you know.
Critical race theory?
Yes. So how are we like integrating that into the school? Like, is that of importance? Because these events are great, but like, making sure that we're talking about like the real history and the truth is important, so.
Yes. So, and I will, I will say that there, there is a equity piece to everything that we do in terms of our curriculum. I would defer to the curriculum team to actually tell you all the details of how that's embedded. But yeah, but equity and making sure that, that we're representing not just historical, right? Because equity and culturally responsive curriculum, like for instance, investing in books that show students in normal, everyday things that look like the students there. So it's not just showing students the history of things that have happened, but all actually having just main characters that are Black characters, or Hispanic characters that are going out for ice cream, not just.
No, exactly. That's great, yeah.
So those types of, those types of investments have actually been made, where we actually provided all school libraries with culturally responsive materials. So that's like one of the first layers.
Great.
The second layer is actually to teach the, the teachers, actually not teachers, support teachers in being culturally responsive. So making sure that in the things that we do and the decisions that we're making, that we're being culturally responsive. Now, people have to understand what is culturally responsive. Culturally responsive is not just teaching Black history or Hispanic history, it's making sure that you're teaching to the audience that you have in front of you, and making sure that students see themselves in their curriculum. So that's part of the, the equity work also, but it, it has a lot to do with the curriculum work.
That's great. And I, and I did notice, honestly, when I left Wolf Pit, that in the library, they were putting a lot of books that like just news, and it was great. And it wasn't like, even like audience, I don't know if that makes sense, you know what I mean? It was like, this is just it.
Well, they shouldn't be, it shouldn't be that we're like making this huge announcement, because we've gotten books about Black and Brown children like it's a novel idea. It really should just be the way that we represent ourselves as a community, is we're a diverse community.
I love that.
Yeah. So that's definitely part of it, but, but we do have like an emphasis on making sure that we're being culturally responsive. But oftentimes, culturally responsive is misunderstood.
Right, okay. Awesome.
Just like critical race theory.
Just like critical race theory.
No, no, it's taught last.
Absolutely.
Right, awesome, okay. I'm just glad that.
No, thank you for raising that. And if you wanted us to expand further, I can ask somebody from the team, okay?
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
I have a question for you. You were talking about the junior survey, and then there's a senior survey about what are you going to do next?
Yes.
My question is the timing. I'm very happy to hear about the junior survey, because we want to have timed up. We are influencing them before they graduate, and then they're just sitting on the couch with, you know, not having anything to do. So my question is about, I talked to some people in Norfolk Ax, that are also concerned with this, I mean, it is a community issue, workforce gap, or kids positively engaged in work that they can support themselves. Came a question of the timing of the senior survey, and if it could be earlier, say in April as opposed to end of June, then we could provide those ten, fifteen, twenty percent of the kids that maybe don't have a plan to have at least a few.
So they think there's a couple things. One is through our partnership with Rise. There's the junior survey, which is an initial look, kind of load of the data, but then the their platform allows for that plan to be updated between now and then. So it's not just a static dataset. The idea is that you would pull the list of students that say, I don't have a plan, I'm unsure, right? And then in conversation, if they have changed their mind, you could change that status of a plan within the system, so that it doesn't have to just be collecting.
That's what you're saying there, right?
The, the senior survey, there's a, there's a couple elements to it. I mean, one is the very like practical, kind of where do I need to send my final transcript? You know, kind of a phone number. The timing will somewhat be, because this is in partnership with Rise, the Rise Network has a survey that they give to their core network of schools, and Brian McMahon is one of the core network schools, and has been a part of that core network for a number of years. So once that core network survey is ready, then we can roll that out to all of our schools. And we anticipate we're going to use the same instrument, and we may add, you know, a couple of questions.
So is there a potential of having it a little earlier than at the very end?
Yeah, and usually it is earlier. It is just get started earlier. So I know like last year, CGS gave their survey in April, and they were, they were like entirely done in FAFSA in April.
So that would be helpful, and perhaps you went to it, I think we, many of us attended the, I'm not sure what you call it, but gathering of trade people for the kids. It was really wonderful, but more of that, more of that.
And the goal was certainly through the work, like the Rise work, and that these post-secondary teams are going to be needing, we pull them together every other month across all four high schools to begin to look at this. So we don't want to get to do, we don't even want to get to April and find out a student doesn't have a plan. We want to start now and continue to support students all the way.
I'm very happy to hear this.
And one of the things that I think, just to connect with, with being talked about here, Carol and I had a conversation about this very point, and we were talking about, starting as early as ninth grade and having these conversations. So we, we have a plan that we are developing to start as early as freshman and engaging in these conversations with students. And even if it's not through Rise, looking for tools that we could potentially use to start those initial conversations and those children that are undecided, as early as ninth grade, really have them have more intensive support with the counselors around identifying what their interests are, whether it's college, career right out of their high school, or like they need to like engage in some self-discovery to identify what path they want to go forward. But starting it as early as ninth grade to support particularly those undecided students in figuring out what next.
Did you mention something about a plan, you know, graduate with a plan? Is that, is that a catch?
That's the goal, where we want to graduate with a, with a plan, right? Absolutely, whatever the plan is, and to have completed the milestones towards that plan, right? We know that if a student says they want to enter the military, but they haven't taken the exam, that's unlikely that they're going to fulfill that, that path, right? So.
And another example, like we've been talking, like right now, looking at industry within New York, HVAC is a perfect example. There's a school in New York right now that provides a HVAC certification. So Carol and I had a conversation about reaching out to the college, to, to, well, to the trade school, and figuring out a way which we could potentially partner with different trade schools and, and unions, and providing kind of like a dual program, where part of it is academic, part of it is training to a particular certification. So by the time they graduate, they graduate with a charging fee. It's something that we're looking into, looking at the finances around it.
This is important work.
So you mentioned that there was a decrease in incidences.
Yes.
So is that related to suspensions?
Yeah. So suspensions, it's, it's in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, and expulsion.
So when it comes to Black and Brown, there's a lot to unwind in terms of how we got there.
Correct.
I know you're working on the FIA's training with Dr. Ferguson, some other things. Does that number reflect a decrease in the number of Black and Brown kids in terms of incidences as well?
So, no.
It does not.
I mean, in short, I'm going to say no, because they're still overrepresented. So I think that in understanding that the numbers overall have decreased across all subgroups, right? But in terms of representation, how you're showing up, you're still over. They're still overrepresented. It's Black students and students with IEPs. So there is still an overrepresentation of those groups, which then leads us to like, how are we as a, as a district, and how are we as a community engaging our Black students, our Black boys, it tends to be boys? And then, and it's not a, one you get to high school. It's as a system. How, how are we engaging with our, our Black boys? And the community.
Do you think MBK, that it's having an impact? But I get to tell at this point.
We're gathering that data right now, yeah. We're gathering that data, so for the students that are part of the MBK that have had incidences, it's all about like, do they, do we see a reduction in it? You know, so not all the students, obviously, that are in MBK or MSK have incidences, because it's, so it's for the ones that do. But then how do you measure other things that measure engagement, like attendance, right? Or just survey data to just say that, you know, do they feel connected to an adult? Do they, do they have a plan? So it's more having like a more holistic approach at looking at these students. But I would imagine that that's just one strategy that we would utilize. Overall, we have to, as a system, look at how are we impacting our Black boys? We are not unique, right? It is a nationwide problem, but I don't want us to accept the fact that it's a nationwide problem as just what normal is.
And to be fair, it's something that's going to take time to seize. And like everything, and that we have to be patient, but it's like, we want to fast-track.
And, and part of it is being honest about your data, right? And actually having access to data. So part of the systems that we set in place with the data and with our safety infrastructure is actually just collecting data and being accurate in our data. And so then when you have the data, you could say, well, these are our numbers, now what is it that we're doing? And we can actually have those honest conversations about who are we as a system?
Just technically unpack a little bit, when, where is that, where's the student? When the student answers the questionnaire, the student in English class?
Which questionnaire?
Any, any of the surveys or any of the data?
Well, it depends, yeah. It depends on the questionnaire, and it depends on the survey. For the MBK, they're in one of the MBK events.
Right.
Yeah.
But for the junior survey.
Most schools identified in an advisory period.
That's what makes that make sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
Although some schools did more like a junior assembly at some point, so the people have tackled it in many different ways.
But they try to make sure that it's during the school day, so that they can actually gather that data.
I think one point that I want to make, because we have four seconds. One of the interesting correlations that we find is that a lot of the kids that are being suspended in special education are usually Black boys, and there's a direct correlation with that. One of the things that Rob and I have been talking about, looking at, is the process by which a child is suspended.
Right.
That has an IEP, because sometimes it's a manifestation of the disability, and it doesn't like contemplate until like several days after. So we're trying to revise the way in which that happens to make sure that that, that doesn't occur.
We are.
Ties out of bar. I think the, the, the challenge is, because everybody's going down, right? We're still not addressing the, the issue of the disproportionality, so.
And the challenge is how the counselor or whoever is working with the student sees the student. There was something on social media the other day, and he was, actually, I think he was a psychologist, and he was talking about how I have a student who comes to me, you know, with an issue, behavior issue, and the white council treats him a certain way. And then when a Black kid comes with the same issue, he or she is treated totally different, maybe let's call the police. So it's like, that's a whole other thing to watch.
I've seen this in like real time, like I'm like.
No, I know. And that's a, that's a deeper, that's a deep issue that we have to.
And it's, yeah, I think that we're taking good steps, like I.
Hi, how are you?
Nice to see you.
Yeah, so thanks for joining us tonight, too. So we're, we're going to be talking to you a little bit about three different goals in the station. One is some elements that fall under Goal Three, some elements that fall under Goal Four, and some elements that fall under Goal Five. And as I'm waiting for this to open, actually, one of them is, we'll be talking about infrastructures, the fact that we're putting in a lot more security systems, which is like, that's what is taking, taking forever, so. This is right.
I told you the pressure's on.
So, yeah. So in Goal Three, you'll hear a little bit more about this, you're probably already from, from Linda and so forth, about operations, finance, and so forth. Some of the other things that fall underneath here are also things like policies for the district, our digital learning strategic plan, because this is actually part of our infrastructure on how we operate, which includes IT as well as how we teach, and then our infrastructure as well. So that is. So that is truly like the backbone of, goes along with construction. One of our projects that we were working on in Goals this year was our model policy implementation. So a year and a half ago, if you remember, we actually decided to move to a different model with our policies. We got rid of all of our own outdated policies. In order to get into compliance, we put in all these new model policies. Last year, we spent most of the year really looking at how to update that and how do we kind of go through a process of keeping them updated? This year, we've been able to refine that a little bit more. So we've got a calendar that we've actually been able to follow. We've updated over 14 policies already this year in our policy meetings. But we've been able to implement three additional policies that'll come into play for this year. The first is our grading for equity policy. Okay, so we presented it, it'll be back on the docket in April, so that we talk about the implementation of it. We just, you'll get, you'll be voting on an AI policy in the next business meeting. So that was just presented a policy. And then we're also looking at how do we align our practices internally with our policies? So this is a partnership between Sandra and I, we've been working on an operations manual. And we'll hear more about a principal's manual too. So we're trying to actually make sure that we, we document what we need to people to understand. But an operations manual that's tied to our policies and how they relate back. So this is a bit in progress and we're moving along. Our digital learning strategic plan, so I know Carol, you were here, but how originally when we started, we, going through our strategic plan in general, one of the things we wanted to do is align and make sure there's cohesiveness with digital learning. So we actually have a digital learning strategic plan that, that ties right back to our overarching strategic plan goal. So there's a digital equity goal and compares them to the equity goal and see how those all fit. At the same time, we did a project with the city, an efficiency study. And the one recommendation that came out of that was having a strategic plan for digital learning, for, for technology. So we actually turned that into a digital learning strategic plan. We built it last year. We got it approved by the board at the end of the year. And now we're in the process of implementing it. So we use it right now, some of the things that are going on currently, just a couple of highlights. We have a dashboard now for principals that they can actually see what software is being used by what students. So sooner or later, we'll be able to look at an ROI and be like, kind of saying it's like, all right, so you're paying this much money for a software. Is it, is it actually being used by these students? And does it make sense and how are we using that? We're also implementing a data governance group. And that is actually a team-focused way of looking at how do we manage data? And so there are five different elements to that. It talks about things like compliance. Are we making sure that the data is clean? Are we making sure that, you know, we need to deal with this ethically? There's a number of different areas. But we go through a protocol with that and that governance group is now in the progress of being put in place. There'll be members from each department in that data governance group. So that then if there's a project going on in HR, finance, which is what's happening right now, curriculum may have some good ideas and they'll be sitting at the table too, talking about how we align that itself. But it does, as Dr. Straus said, focuses more on a team effort, not just one person doing things in silence. And then finally, our infrastructure. Really, we've been focused on, you'll hear more about the digital promise piece and us moving towards Chromebooks in the next, in a little bit. But we've been using our capital funds to be able to make sure that our infrastructure is actually in place. As you know, we have 12,000 students. We need to replace probably on the average for a four-year cycle, 3,000 computers a year. The digital promises kind of gave us a, a little bit of a reprieve for this current year. So we were able to kind of cut down on our capital costs. But we do still need to make sure that we upgrade everything else in our infrastructure, which means the backend, everything in the walls that you see. So just like we upgrade computers, we have to upgrade access points now for Wi-Fi on a regular basis. So ideally, every four to five years, all of the access points in the district get replaced. So that they don't get into a cycle, that they're not actually moving at the speed that they need to. And then we've also been really working very closely with my whole team on building a new incident recovery manual. And this is basically so if we have a disaster of some sort, like data recovery, making sure that there's systems in place and we know exactly what to do. And as systems change, that has to be a living document because there's a, you know, like I said, if we, if a server crashes, we need to know what to do. But if we have another server that's a little different, we need to make sure that we know how to address that too as well. So the team's been working on that as well. We will be doing more, the next steps with this is that we're going to be doing more with digital, with digital promise once we get a little more information from digital promise, when those machines are going to be arriving. Leave it at that.
So Goal Four, that we've been tasked with is all about cultivating instructional leadership across our schools. And so we have our four sub-goals, but I'm going to just dive right in and talk about them one at a time without reading them to you. So if we can, thank you. So our first one is how are we supporting our school leaders to really drive school improvement work at their schools? And this is all grounded in the fact that we think very carefully, thoughtfully, strategically around how are we investing in our current leaders as well as our future school leaders here in Norwalk? And one of the ways that we do that is by convening the professional learning community of principals, APs and coaches on a monthly basis. And when we come together, we focus on high-quality instruction and support, school improvement and leadership, leading for equity with our partner, Dr. Eddie Fergus from Rutgers University. And during that time, they engage in professional learning, they engage in collaborative learning experiences with their colleagues, all about learning with and from each other. And they also have time to really think about what is it that we've learned here today and think about what are their next steps? Because we know that the life of a school leader, once they get back into the school building, is a busy one. And we want to make sure they're thinking that they can walk out of those meetings with concrete next steps. We give a feedback survey at the end of every session and the first question we always ask is overall, how helpful was this session for you and your leadership? And on a scale of one to five, if you average the ratings from the beginning of the year to now, we're at an average of 4.54. So that tells us like we're meeting their needs and they're finding that the experience to be meaningful. But they're still always giving us feedback of what adjustments that we could make for the next upcoming meeting or the future meetings. Another way that we have worked to really focus our work with our school leaders is with the learning walks that you heard Dr. Australia reference earlier. So this year, we really focused in on two instructional priorities. Standard-based planning, because we know students need consistent access to grade level texts and tasks, and student engagement. Because the planning can be really strong, but if the student engagement isn't high, then we're not going to meet the, you know, the accomplishments that we want. And so what we do is we have district and school leaders come together and engage in these district learning walks. We did one in October and one in December and we'll do another one in April. And the beauty of this is it's because all of our work, if we're not seeing the impact on the classroom, then what's the work that we're doing? And so by bringing all these people together to get into classrooms and to kind of collect data around what are the patterns and trends that we're seeing that tells us if our professional learning is working and what are the future needs for professional learning? So the graph that you see over on the right, planning was our first priority. In our October learning walk, we saw the presence of the planning look fours that we have, the practices, at 58%. By December, we saw that number rise to 75%. In December for engagement, this is when we collected some baseline data around student engagement. We were at 48%. We've been now working on student engagement for the last couple of months. Allison and I are already seeing on our school visits, improvement in this area. But we're really excited to kind of codify it with the April learning walk that's coming up. And so that's been a way for us to kind of quantify what are the patterns and trends that we're seeing across the classrooms. The third bullet is around the school improvement plan. So each year, schools identify five goals. There's a math goal, an ELA goal, a equity disproportionality goal, a supportive environment goal, which is really around like culture, and then a teacher team goal. And so we've just finished conducting our mid-year conferences with all of the principals and looking at all the data. Where are you? Are you on track? And, you know, I highlighted here the math and reading goals because, you know, in math, with, you heard from Diane Filardo at the board meeting a couple of weeks ago, that we've seen extraordinary progress and growth in math. And we, one of the points that we look at is how many of the students are at or above the 61st percentile? And why is that an important data point for us? Because we see a correlation between students who score at or above that point with predicted proficiency on the S-Back assessment. So in reading, we did not see, we saw a third of our schools are on track to meeting or exceeded their ELA goals. We've seen a lot of growth in some of the students in the lower percentiles. For example, the number of students that are projected for summer school has decreased from last year to this year. So we're seeing growth in certain areas, but we know we want to see greater growth in this 61st percentile piece. And so some of the next steps you see is where, based on data, figure, identifying targeted supports for schools. A school might have seen great growth in grades three, four, but five wasn't. So like what is it that we need to dig into grade five and be very like systematic and targeted with the support that we provide? We're working with TNTP with three of our middle schools and three of our high schools to help in this area. The last bullet is the one, you know, that, they're all exciting, but it's really exciting to me and to Allison. This is a new initiative that we've started this year. And this is all about how can we tap the potential and the capacity of who we have in the district for our future leadership positions? And so we have 19 teacher, teacher leaders in this cohort this year that we work with on a monthly basis, engaging in, you know, professional learning around the priorities of instruction, leadership. And they're actually leading an action project in their school community so they can apply what they're learning with us. And it gives them an opportunity to lead some work in their school, but also gives us an opportunity to see how they're applying that leadership and be able to coach into that work. So some of the big kind of buckets and then Allison's going to, Allison's going to talk about two other areas.
So the next bucket that I'm going to talk a little bit about is teacher feedback. So I'm thinking about how the board, Mary Ann shared around the professional learning that we are providing to principals and APs and coaches, that then their turn came to their teachers in their buildings. How do we know that this professional learning is actually taking hold in the classroom and that it's being implemented with fidelity? And so one of the ways in which we're able to continue to support teachers in their development is by giving them feedback on their practices. And so one of the things that we've been doing is really supporting school leaders with giving strong, actionable feedback that connects to the professional learning, that connects to the work that we're doing around standard-based instruction and student engagement, so that we can improve teacher practice in the classroom that will then result in improved performance by students, right? Because again, if all of what we're doing is not improving the learning for students as evidenced by their performance, then we have to go back to the journal board and rethink what we're doing. But we have to have a system in place to ensure that teachers are continuously developing and getting that feedback. The feedback's part of the process. You can't just have like a, you know, a workshop or a session and expect that it's going to take hold. There has to be continuous support. So as we continue to continuously support school leaders, Mary Ann and I, we're teaching school leaders how to support their teachers in this work. And so some of the ways that we do it is through the learning walks that Mary Ann spoke of. We also look at videos during professional learning and sort of develop a common language around what strong instruction looks like and the kind of feedback that we would give to teachers so that they can improve their performance in that classroom. And as a result of that, some of the things that you'll notice is our subgroups are monthly enrollers as well as our specialized learning students are showing significant growth as a result of this work. And again, another thing that Mary Ann and I do is when we visit schools and we visit classrooms, we ask the leaders to share with us the feedback that they're giving teachers from the classrooms that we're visiting. So we also can observe the continuous growth. And it also allows us to see what additional learning school leaders need in this bucket of work so that we can continue to support them as well. And then our next bucket of work is cycles of improvement. So cycles of improvement, they're research-based, it's a research-based process that lasts about 10 weeks. And the process begins with looking at student data to identify where there is a need based on student performance. Another beauty of this process is we've incorporated student shadowing. So administrators will shadow a student for a class period to really get behind the lens of a student, a particular student, to see how they're experiencing the class and do they have access? And where are they not engaged in the lesson? And thinking about what is needed for that student to actually engage. So it's not, you know, as Mary Ann talked about before, you can do all of this planning, but if students are not engaged, then it's really not having any, the planning is not having any impact. And so part of getting to the root cause of understanding why students are not engaging is through student shadowing to see where the breakdown is occurring. And it's been a very powerful tool for our administrators. And so based on the data, the student shadowing, the learning walks that are conducted to assess teacher practice, what the team then does is create a teacher goal that is designed to improve teacher practice as well as identifying a student performance goal in relation to a particular standard. And there's a focus on a targeted group of students, typically students who are not engaged. And so there's a whole action plan that's put into place with professional learning, the literacy and the math coaches, they go in, they coach teachers, they give feedback, they model practices. School leaders give feedback to the teachers as well. And then what they do is then come back and look at student, student work to measure the impact of everything that they have done and make adjustments along the way. And the great thing about this process is this is a process where a central office staff are working on the ground closely with schools and doing this. So we have education administrators who work directly with the coaches and school leaders. And then Mary Ann and I are there at the beginning of the cycle launch. And then we come in for a mid-cycle check-in where the school presents us with the data of the impact of the, of the work that they've been doing based on the plan. We visit classrooms to see the progress that teachers are making as well. And then we're able to give the school leaders feedback as well and support on how either great the process is doing or if the process is not working, suggestions on how they can improve the process to have impact. And then we have a kind of cycle meeting where we're able to sort of close it out, look at what the impact of the ten cycle has been on student achievement and teacher practice. And then the school comes up with next steps of how they will continue this work. And again, this is a very detailed, research-based approach to improving schools. And ultimately, what the goal is, is that this practice just naturally becomes embedded in what schools do, right? So you see that a group of students are not performing, that you begin to look at the data, shadow the students, right? Come up with a plan of action on how to either improve teacher practice around this problem or support the learning of students in the classroom and then measure the impact of that. This way, no child gets left behind. And so as you can see here, so far this year, 48% of our schools have engaged in a cycle of improvement. And there are some schools who have engaged in multiple cycles because they have continued this work after they've gone through the first cycle because they see the value in that work. 90% have met or partially met their teacher practice goal. And 70% have met or partially met their student outcome goal. And so, you know, again, as I shared previously, you know, we really want to scale this practice so that it's not just focused on like that particular grade or content area, but it becomes a school-wide process for school leaders.
And the last part of Goal Four, we focused mostly on instructional leadership up to this point, but we know our school leaders have multiple responsibilities. And so this sub-goal is really around how are we supporting them with support and guidance from our HR and legal partnering divisions? And so we work with them. Sometimes we're noticing a pattern and we need to make, you know, provide some targeted training to school leaders. This could be anything from like changes in FMLA guidance to teacher, to evaluation plans, to time and attendance, a new finance protocol. And so we embed that learning into our monthly meetings or into our weekly communications. And we're working on building a principal's handbook where we're centralizing everything from all departments. What are the protocols, protocols, processes and resources that school leaders needed at their fingertips in a centralized location? And we know that this is not only going to help our current school leaders, but it's also going to support us with onboarding of new and future school leaders and by having this kind of organized in a very accessible way. So I'll hand it over to Ralph for Goal Five.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so, so Goal Five, really, this is our goal that really focused.
Yeah, so, so goal five, really, this is a, our goal that really focuses a lot around access, around high quality instruction. And when I think of those two things, I really think of innovative practice. So this, a lot of that lives here, even though it lives throughout the whole piece, but this is where we kind of identify a lot of things that we're doing. And I have four that I'm gonna be focused, four sub-goals that I'll go through more quickly. Um, our first is our regular, uh, we've had this in the past around steam learning. Um, this year, that focus has really been around helping to implement our digital promise practice. So, um, if you're not aware, I mean, I know that you've talked about the digital promise program. Um, every student, grade six through twelve, will have a Chromebook that's actually from Verizon with five G access. So every kid, grade six through twelve, will have home internet access. Um, so it's, it's a huge area of equity that we really wanted to make sure that we covered. It's not only having the device, not only having the access. And now we need to make sure they understand how to use it effectively. So you need to have coaches. So we're also implementing, we currently have seven coaches in the district. We're, we're expanding that to twelve coaches. Um, that's being done also in part by Verizon having two bonus coaches for the next couple of years. So they're not paying their full salary, but they're paying a good portion of it. Um, and we're also looking at embedded professional development throughout the year for all of our staff.
This is for parents to do?
Um, yeah, just a couple of other things with this. If you, if you weren't aware, we're actually going to try to believe be the largest school district nationally that has a full implementation of this sort. Meaning that you'll go into Chicago public schools and they'll have more kids that are involved with digital promise. But, and you go to a smaller district in us of two thousand that every kid, grade six through twelve has it because there's only one school that has, that has the program. We're actually gonna be the largest implementation. They're looking at us. How do we scale? Just so that they can use us as my, as a model. Digital learning. I, I, this is really at the heart of a lot of the work that I do with our coaches. Um, you know, we've been talking a lot about our coaching models in general. Um, our digital learning coaches work in conjunction with our other coaches, with administrators and with teachers. One of the things we've been really focused on this year is looking at their impact. So we've been, uh, we've been having them actually track the time that they're spending in classrooms, working with teachers on specific software areas. Are they actually helping them to pre-plan? Are they co-teaching with the teachers? Are they meeting with them afterwards? So this graph kind of gives a little bit of a representation of time that's being spent there. Two of the larger ones that you're seeing there are in-class, the red and the green are being, are actually classroom practices. So that's actually them spending time in the classroom or pre-planning with the teacher to make sure that they have lessons. Um, one of the things that we wanted to focus on, our, our goal this year was to have these coaches deliver a hundred workshops and touch at least two hundred and fifty teachers in this process. They exceeded that in the first semester. So it was a very low goal to set. We'll, we'll have to kind of adjust that for next year. So we're really excited about that. Um, and our, I probably should also mention two of this, that our library media specialists work in conjunction with the coaches as well too. And ideally, they can actually offer as kind of a pseudo-coach at certain time in basically embedding those skills. They actively deliver our digital citizenship curriculum, but there's a lot more that they can do actually in ways specifically with their teachers to be able to help them, help them support the integration technology in the classroom. Um, Dr. Straya mentioned our future ready programs earlier. Um, so currently we have a hundred and two students enrolled. Um, last year we had forty-nine students that graduated. A couple of weeks ago, we had fifteen students that graduated mid-year. Um, we have at least thirty that have been graduating, I think over the summer, between June and August, um, probably a little more. Um, so we're really, really excited about that. The, the programs are working well. Um, we've got a ton of kids that are actually interested. Um, we're actually at full capacity for what we have right now. And, um, one of the other things to date is that I think is actually pretty impressive is these were students that were probably not only absent, but failing in school. Um, for this first semester, seventy-four percent of the classes we attempted were all passed. So, I mean, it's like we're seeing a big, big improvement in their, in their, um, work. And then finally partnerships. This doesn't kind of fall under any specific bucket, but it's so critical that we understand how we work with our community partners, our philanthropic partners as well, to be able to help fund these initiatives. So, uh, our goal this year was to be able to develop better communications. And we've developed an impact, an annual impact report that'll be going out, talking about how philanthropy through their funding has actually impacted certain programs within our, within our schools. Um, we had an investors convening, um, just recently. And at that investors convening, we were able to bring in some additional investors potentially. And we talked about our strategic plan. We got feedback from them. And we looked at how that kind of aligns with the work that they do. And we actually put our asks, in a sense, into three buckets. One around digital, um, uh, excuse me, one around future readiness, one specifically around data and continuous improvement, and then also our workforce development. And those are the areas that we could use some additional support in. So we were really excited to kind of get that moving and kind of grow that. We're also trying to put a better structure in place, which means we need a good backbone. We need a good five oh one C three. So we're working with N E F on helping to expand their capacity to be able to support us.
All right, questions?
Well, so that investor meeting, I've heard about that and it sounds like it was a huge success. Is that the first time that we've done something like of that scale in formality or?
Yeah, it's actually, and you know what we found out? It's like, Richard was really helpful in that too. Um, investors normally don't get together like that.
Right, yeah, that's what I heard.
To get, to get a number of them to actually come to a room and join and knowing that others were being there, that means that there's an interest. But there's something to be said about the fact that, you know, as a district, in the last couple of years, you look at our trajectory, we're starting to receive more federal funding and grants. We're getting things like our magnet school grant, the digital promise grant, which is worth millions. Um, all of that success starts to drive people to say, there's something going on here and we want to be part of that and we wanna join in that investment as well. And so we're trying to figure out how that aligns and how we bring more people on board.
Right.
Yes, um, the, and three point four, you talked about the plan, strategic plan. And this was the first year that you guys started. Is this a three-year, four-year?
Oh, the digital learning strategic plan. So the digital learning strategic plan is a four-year plan, okay? Um, but, I mean, we're gonna be revising it definitely before the, before year four. So, um, once again, it aligns. So it focuses on what the library media special, there's an instructional component to it that talks about what coaching and library media specialists do. It also focuses around our data, um, like how do we manage our data and what does that look like? How do we manage our infrastructure as well? So all of those are different core components within there. Um, but it did come out of one of the other areas was the efficiency study that we did in jointly with the city. It was one recommendation that I was happy to receive because these are things that we really need to have in place. So it's, it's helped drive like the work that we're doing.
Also is a concern that I have, cause you mentioned it before, and I'm hoping that that does improve as far as your data department. Your numbers are very low. You know, so when you're doing all these great things, you know, and you're doing it with a short period of staff, what are we doing about that?
So, so part of it, when you really look at it from a, I'll, I'll put a corporate hat on. This is why that data governance is so important. Because there are other people that can actually do that work with you that already exist in the system. There are great people that we have in finance, H R, curriculum, everywhere, that understand data. They just need to be brought together so that we can start to develop protocols and make sure that they start working in conjunction with each other on whatever the project is.
Yeah.
So that's the way to scale it and make it really sustainable, tie people together in a team, but also keep us to a point where it's actually, it's efficient too, you know? Dr. Straya talked a little bit about A I. A I is gonna have a huge, huge effect on how we manage data. And so other people that may understand a bit about it will be able to kind of jump into this a little bit more, knowing that they've got support from others to be able to kind of build. So, yeah, we've got to rely on that technology to help build our own capacity.
I didn't know, like the Chromebooks here, they're really not adapted. So you guys are really doing it, cause I know in Stanford, they've been functioning with Chromebooks for a while now.
We had, we had PCs at the high schools.
I was gonna ask about that too.
To be honest, Stanford did too.
Wait, what? I thought migrate to Chromebooks because I thought during the pandemic.
We got, we got a bunch of PCs and so did Stanford though, so.
Got, um, a Chromebook.
A device.
A device.
It was either a PC or a Chromebook. So, yeah, depending on the situation.
We want everybody on Chromebook.
Yeah, we're looking really and truly just a cloud-based model. That's a little bit easier to manage. Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
All right. Um, I had a question on goal four point one, page fifty-two. Um, and I know that we did talk about this in our last workshop meeting with Diane. But the, the thirty-three, thirty-three percent reading number of percentages of students at or above the sixty-first percentile, that's a little bit alarming. Am I not reading that right or interpreting it correctly?
Yes. So that is, so schools set different goals. So, and we do it based on where were you end of year last year to where you want to be end of year this year. And so what we do is if your school, let's say fifty percent of your students were at or above the sixty-first percentile, then we would set a goal for where you're gonna be, you know, cause everybody's starting point is different. So everybody's ending point is gonna be different.
Okay.
Um, and so that is saying the schools that right now are on track to meeting their goal. So it's not saying thirty-three percent of students. It's saying thirty-three percent of schools are on track to meeting their school-specific goal.
But that's still not.
Correct.
Great.
Correct. But this is what we've identified is because like I mentioned, we're seeing growth in like some of the students who are below the twentieth percentile and the twentieth to the fortieth percentile. But it's, we're seeing that in that middle, to get to that, jump to that sixty-first percentile is like, is the area of concern based on looking at this data that we're really focusing on.
Right.
So that's why the science of reading.
Yeah, I was gonna say like we have a new curriculum coming in, right?
Well, so it's not a new curriculum, but it's helping teachers to understand like the, the science of reading. So when they're implementing the curriculum, they, there's a deeper understanding of like, why do I need to teach, use this read aloud in this particular way? Because that's how reading is developed. And so, and then in the middle schools and the high schools, we've identified, um, you know, we have the middle schools and high schools working with a group called T N T P, which is very well known for their improvement that they can cultivate in schools around standards based instruction.
Right.
And so we see the science of reading P D is where we're providing the targeted support with elementary. And then T N T P is working with us with the secondary schools. So like, in every, you know, when we meet with the principals, we're, the data looks very different from school to school. You know, in some cases, it's, it's really, we're seeing a particular subgroup that we need to focus on. In some cases, we're seeing a particular grade level that we need to focus on. So it becomes like a, it's very differentiated and so that we can make sure.
Within each school, within each grade, within each class. Um, I hope that we're really paying attention to that and focusing on it because anybody who saw Right to Read, that documentary, I mean, that was like kind of terrifying. Um, and we have to make sure that our students can read.
Absolutely. And we've also pivoted in terms of our professional learning. So a lot of, you know, what we had been focusing on, uh, last month and the month before was around student engagement. Um, but this month, actually next week, we have a principal, A P, coaches meeting. We're really focusing around R A climbing and supporting teachers and administrators with that.
I mean, is it safe to say that because we have such a big M L L population, that that's also maybe why our reading numbers are?
It's one component.
It's what?
One component.
Yeah, right? Because English is a second language for a lot of our kids, so. Yeah.
You know, and it's, yeah, it, it, you know, it comes back, like, there's no one single variable, right? Contributing to this.
Really hard to diagnose, but we need to focus on it.
Well, and there's been kind of, you know, a circling of the wagons, you know, over the last couple of weeks of different people from different departments, you know, multiple people planning this professional learning for principals, A Ps and coaches next week, thinking around then what's the implementation plan after that professional learning? What data are we looking at? Cause we don't wanna wait until the end of year to see how we're doing. Like what's the, the more frequent progress monitoring?
Right.
Four point two, uh, teachers' feedback. How are they handling negative feedbacks that come across? And I know you said it was like nineteen teachers that volunteered for that program?
Um, yeah, I think that, that's a different program. Um, but in terms of teacher feedback, I mean, teachers are given feedback as part of like their teacher evaluation, um, principals do drop-ins and things like that. Um, you know, what I was saying is like how the feedback is received really depends upon, um, you know, the relationships that students have with their teachers. Um, you know, and how they're creating that culture of, you know, improvement so that teachers are receptive to it. I mean, for the most part, because the feedback is directly on, I mean, the look, the look for document that Mary Ann referred to, to the professional learning, um, you know, many teachers have been receptive because it doesn't feel like an eye patch, right? Because it totally aligns with the work that we've been doing in the district, right? And it's consistent.
I, I was similarly thinking, like, okay, are these like surprise drop-ins? Like, I mean, I'm in a corporate position, like if my boss just like dropped in on a meeting unannounced, like I would be, I'm just like, what's going on here? I mean, are these like unannounced, you know, principals dropping in and sitting in under your desk for half a day?
I would say some are announced and some are not announced. Um, but that's very typical in the education field, just in general. Um, not, not even specific to Norwalk.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a common practice.
One last thing for me on four point four, Mary Ann, listen, I think this is a great idea to have a principal handbook. So hopefully that can happen.
Oh, it's already in the works.
Really? Cause I think that's an excellent idea, you know, because, excuse me, there's no excuses. You know, sometimes you get busy, you know, I know how it is in my profession, so I forget. And, you know, and there's some things that I know I gotta go and even on my twenty-plus years, I'm like, oh, wait a minute, you grab this book. You know, and I just think, but for the new staff and even the older staff, the newer staff, I'm gonna be on top of this thing, but for the older staff, it's easier to have a handbook and it's easier to have that and to have that and be able to go to it, to have a go-to like that. I think that's an excellent, excellent idea.
There's a lot asked of our school leaders, right? And, you know, to think that you're gonna have every single thing, you know, memorized, but also just, we really want it to be centralized and very accessible so that, you know, you can look at it and then if you have questions, reach out to the appropriate person, but like you have a starting place, you know?
And sometimes you're not even aware of, you know, a policy, that, you know, a policy even exists or anything. Because you haven't confronted that problem.
Please drop off your last call and start transitioning to your station please.
This way they'll have more protection.
Right.
Thank you.
This is Kim Kay.
I hope that the different stations that talked about those, all of our six goals, provided the board some insight in terms of the work that has happened thus far, the work that the team is thinking about and working towards so that we can meet the targets set by the board, um, last year and that it can help also shape the work that we need to do for the twenty-four, twenty-five academic school year. I'm gonna turn it over to the chair so that we can go into executive session. Before we go into executive session, we have public comments. Do we have a list? Public comments. I think, did I turn it off? I think I turned it off. I'm sorry.
I don't know how to turn it on.
Sorry.
I don't wanna destroy it. Okay, good evening. For the record, my name is Diane LaRocella. I live at twenty-one Little Fox Lane and I've been a member of Norwalk for forty years. I cannot believe it. Um, but I'm still here and I'm sorry that there are not more residents here because this was really an extraordinary way to get to know all the things that are being planned. Um, I wanted to tell you for briefly on background, I have three minutes. I'm currently a member of the Connecticut wide, Connecticut School Indoor Air Quality Coalition, made up of people, many of us are in the business of some, of environmental health. And we have been helping the legislative special, um, they have a special committee that's been studying, uh, the issue of indoor. that's been studying the issue of indoor air quality and have been making sure that DAS makes the HVAC application process a lot more user-friendly because it wasn't for the schools and for our building management people. So we're, we're checking it out. And you, according to what's the plan is there'll be a one-year and a five-year inspection where you'll utilize consultants to make sure that whatever equipment you put in, that it's working properly, that it's balanced. And, and so I think I'm pleased that finally the governor did allow for some money reimbursement for HVAC, which wasn't the case up until recently, up until COVID really. I love this lovely new renovation. But life is short and several of you have heard me, opportunities exist. And I'm speaking to goal number two about facilities and consultation, business operations and facilities. And I do think there is still money to be saved and money to be added into your programs by taking a look in your business plans that you have. Not only the indoor air quality enhancements. It'd be great to do all the schools, but the way the state is doing it, it's impossible. However, if you also think of including energy efficiency and adding renewables while you're doing indoor air quality and HVAC, that will help you save money in the short and long run. It can be a curriculum enhancement, and I know that we have a curriculum committee. We, I was just speaking at a state legislative discussion about solar and schools. There is, and I will send all of you, there is going to be a public hearing. They're working out a new bill on solar in schools. And so I hope that I can encourage some of you to help me, encourage the city, who is your partner, to pivot their current policy, which is, I feel as a professional, wrong-headed in that the policy has been to only put solar on schools that are either new construction, like Cranberry, or additions like Naramec, Ponus, and then gut renovations like Jefferson. But not enough solar so that you can realize the cost savings. It's more than just climate change and achieving our climate footprint, carbon footprint. It's about saving money for the taxpayers, saving money for all of your budgets so that you can use that money and savings for programs and things that I heard about today. And I was really impressed by all the things going on. Lastly, as far as facilities, I do feel that we can and must enhance how we collect waste. And I think DPW should take it out of your hands so that you can do the recycling. That is a state law, it's not consistent. And the reason why it fits in goal number two and your curriculum goals is that you could have children who will become our future engineers, will help plan and reduce the waste that's permeating our whole society and adding to the cost of environmental destruction. So with that, I'll, I'll leave it. I'm going to be speaking with some of you individually offline and some of the staff, which I've tried to do in the past, and I'm, I'm going to give it one more college try. So I thank you for having this meeting tonight. I really appreciate it. And I do think we have to do better in saving energy costs for the district and the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So next item of the agenda is going into executive session for strategic plan discussion, motion to go into executive session. Executed by Colin. We will return. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We are back from an executive session. We had good conversations and a lot of information to discuss. And it's been a long night and I wanted to thank all my colleagues and everybody here for this evening. And I would like the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Executed by Ashley. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Who did not?